Raise attention, please. We're going to call this work session to order. This is Monday, February 27th, 2017. It is 4:30 PM. Before we get started with the meeting tonight, one of our heroes have fallen. One of our protectors has walked into eternity over the weekend. And I'd like to take a few minutes, if we could, just to stand and have a moment of silence before we go into this meeting. If you guys will please join me. Thank you all very much. Just like to also let Cindy Francisco-Vitch know that she's on our thoughts and also on our prayers. We're going to try to move right downhill tonight. We'll start with number two. We have a public hearing, consideration of fiscal year 2017-2018 budget.
Well, Stephanie, I'll just go through the presentation you're going to do for the public hearing this next week, so you kind of have an idea what information will be in that summation. Also, just to let you know in your packet, there is a cover letter that goes in the budget document itself, which will be accurate as long as there aren't any changes made after we hold the public hearing. But as of today, that would be the cover letter that will go with our budget document.
Okay, I'll just get started with the presentation. Basically, we just kind of do a recap of the whole budget, the proposed FY '18 budget. So this slide is just going to show you the comparison of revenues by the fund. You can see we, you know, have a pretty good increase compared '18 to '17. And basically, those are in capital projects under business type. Sewer, the sewer budget is actually $2.5 million higher for '18 than it was in '17. Water Works is approximately $900,000 higher. And then in capital projects, obviously, later, we'll go through all the different capital projects we have going this year. But it's an, you know, increase of approximately $6 million compared to last year. This breaks down overall our revenues by what type. You can see taxes basically are 31% of our budget. That's how we pay for everything. Of that 31%, or that $20 million, $14 million is property taxes. The rest of that is a combination of like our lost property tax, our lost local option sales taxes, approximately $4 million. Hotel motels, $900,000. Miscellaneous revenues, this is a category that's set by the state's chart of accounts, because normally, a miscellaneous category shouldn't be 29% of your budget. But of what is included in miscellaneous is bond proceeds. And of that $18.9 million, $16 million is bond proceeds that we will be borrowing in FY '18. The rest that makes up the miscellaneous revenue is sales and commissions. That's coming from like your auditorium, venue works. Donations make up another million. And then you can see it charges for service, which is also another big number, is approximately 20% of our revenues. Sewer makes up 8.7 million of that, and ambulance, 1.1 million. Intergovernmental revenues are your grants, both federal, state, and at the local level, that people contribute to the city. And if anybody has any questions as we go, please stop me. This chart came right out of our OpenGov system. You can see that reference below. So anybody can go out online and look at this, and you can drill down, and it will give you more details.
Tell me again, what of that tax, property taxes, how much?
Property taxes are $14 million of that $20 million.
Okay.
So then here is our overall expenditures by category or by program, is what we call it. You'll see those have increases too, pretty proportionate to our revenues increasing. Public safety, that increases based on the proposed, you know, increase in personnel for fire, police, and the inspections department. The other larger increase, business type, is your sewer. It increased about $1.5 million. Those are for capital projects we'll be doing. Water also had increased their expenditures by about $900,000 compared to last year. And that's in our budget. And then, of course, our capital projects. Those are for the flood mitigation, police building, street projects, which they'll be detailed out later. And then this is the snapshot that you can see from our OpenGov system, how it breaks down the expenses. Personnel make up almost 30% of our total budget expenditures. Contract services make up another 31%, and those are professional services. So a lot of your capital projects are broke down between engineering, other professional services we hire to get those projects done. And then our capital outlay, that's where you're going to see those are our capital projects budgeted. That's 23%. We have a proposed property tax rate of 40 cents. So this just breaks down the history of what we've done in the past seven to eight years of our increases, where we've had them and where we've had no increase. And then I break down just a sample of a residential property that's assessed at $100,000 and calculate what their property tax will be with this rate increase. And so you can see it's an annual increase of $43.20, which breaks out to be a monthly increase of $3.64. The increase is a combination of both. The rollback is increasing this year. That increase is about 2%, 2.5%. And then our increase of 40 cents is like another 2%. Any questions on that? And then here, I just did a sample. If you have commercial property assessed at $200,000, what that increase will be. They don't, there's no change in their rollback amount. So they're going to see a $72 annual increase with the property tax increase. And then what is being added with the property tax increases? I know we seem like we've talked about it a lot, but if other people haven't followed in detail, we're going to add two new officers. Their training and equipment that's needed, a patrol car for them, and a CID car for our detective, and one firefighter, and one part-time nuisance staff. This is just a breakdown to show of that property tax. On this $100,000 house, you're going to pay $930. Kind of just breaks it down by the type of expense where that money goes. I didn't do any percentages, but you can see the fire cost you $176 for the year, police $284, debt service $216. That's paying off previous capital projects that we've bonded for. So this is just, and we do look at this net. So fire is less than police, because we, the ambulance revenue is taken into account there. So any questions?
No, but I do like that. Thank you for the breakdown.
Sure. And then this is a sheet that we had included in your budget documents at the beginning. It just shows the, how we compare to other cities in Iowa with their population over 20,000. And this was as of last year's tax levies. One thing to point out is you'll see the lower taxable value per capita, where we are one of the lower ones. You'll see the other cities that are similar like us, they, they're all in the higher property tax rate. We just need to unfortunately charge more taxes based on our valuation and our per capita. Do you have anything you want to add, Jim?
Well, it's very similar. As we went through the budget process, we had the sheet that showed the per capita, per person taxes that are generated as a comparison between communities. And we were the second lowest per person proper, or tax collected. So it doesn't make it any easier for people here to pay it. It's just we're, with a given levy, we are able to raise much less funds than what our comparable cities are to provide the same services.
So I'll just go through some of the factors that are impacting the budget. Our valuation, overall, our, the taxable valuation was up 2.48%. The TIF taxable valuation was down slightly by 3%, and then our regular was up 3%. So this just shows you the property tax amount that we're bringing in this year compared to last year. So the increase is partly due for the increase in tax rate and also the increase in the valuation.
And I did want to say, one of the things that I was confused by just going through what your presentation has been so far, you mentioned $14 million of property taxes collected, and this shows $11.5 million. The other $2.5 million is TIF tax collections, which is a separate bucket to fund TIF projects.
You're right. In OpenGov, it doesn't break it down that way. This is just some other information that's in the budget. We, our health insurance is projected to increase 3.9% this year, and we have it budgeted at 5%. Ipers isn't changing. Police and fire pension is slightly going down this year. And then this is a recap of our health insurance, showing the last, or next year and then the last four years. Basically, we, you know, have union contract language that our health and, health, dental, and reserve cannot increase greater than 5% or they would need to look at a plan design change. So this is just showing you the caps that we could go to on family and single. And then also the contributions that the employees are making.
And a reminder on the caps, those, the maximum amount goes up 5% each year. So as we're at 3.9% projected this year, that means next year, well, there's the potential to see more in the 6% health insurance increase.
This is a recap just of the general fund revenues. You can see the majority of what comes in to the general fund, of course, is the property tax, 49%. Intergovernmental is another large one. Basically, that is showing a decrease in our budgeted amount. Last year, we had a bus grant funding in '17, and this year, we don't have that in there. And you can see the increase in property tax is based on the increase in rate. Also miscellaneous revenue is up at $200,000. That's based on us budgeting different this year for the auditorium. I'm budgeting more revenues for the venue works and also more expenses. So when we put their financial statement at the end of the year into our books, it's more in line. And this is just showing our general fund expenditures. So we have police making up 31%, fires 26%. They're the largest drivers. You'll see the increases from the prior year's budget. That's based on adding the new personnel. You see the transit decreasing by that $283,000. That again is that bus that was budgeted last year. And this year, we do have a transit bus budgeted to be purchased, but we now have it moved back into our capital project funds instead of the general fund. Other than that, you'll see a lot of the expenses by activity are pretty stable. Again, you'll see auditorium looks like it's jumped up a bit. It's really, overall, the expenses net of the revenues aren't increased. It's just the way we're budgeting, so. And then just another way to look at the general fund. You see a lot of the revenues that do come in the general fund are transfers, $7.4 million. A lot of that's transferring our employee benefits levies into the general fund to pay for the benefits for fire and police and the other general fund employees. Lost is a big transfer into the general fund. And then the transfers out of the general fund, that $900,000 basically is the hotel motel. By state law, you have to receipt in hotel motel into general fund, and then you can transfer it out into a separate fund. But the good news is the transfers are down out of the general fund, and that's based on us making the last of the deficit transfers in this fiscal year '17. So that's why you see that decreased.
Yay.
Yeah. And you see, we have a projected increase in the general fund of the $147,000. Still increasing, just not a lot. Just to recap on the sewer fund, we talked about, we're projected to have a 3% increase in the user fees. Basically, the same reason we've had in the past, the increased operating cost, and then the anticipation of future debt requirements to comply with the EPA, sewer separation. Solid waste, we're doing a 25 cent increase. So it's going to go from $13.75 to $14, based on the increase in tipping fees and then our waste management fee increase. Here's just a laundry list of our capital projects, just so you can see. We do have a busy year ahead of us. The flood protection is the largest one at $7 million. You got the police building renovations, 3.5. And then the, you know, at least three to four big street projects that will be going on throughout our city and the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. Just a little recap on hotel motel. We have $900,000 budgeted in. Again, it's a split between, we get 70% of the revenue up to $700,000, and then 30% goes to the convention and visitors bureau. Anything over $700,000, the city gets 60% and CVB gets 40. We have, even though we have $900,000 budgeted for revenue, our expenditures are $1.1 million. There are some account balances that have built up in those funds that we're going to spend down. So you can see CVB will get $290,000. Parks, we have Rexplex Shelter House going there, carts and mowers for the golf course. The culture assistance, that's pretty much standard from what we've done in the past out of hotel motel. Special projects is where a lot of the revenues go. So you'll see the laundry list there too of the projects that we're going to do from those funds. Anybody have any questions on these? I'll move on to the sales tax. We're budgeting $4.2 million here, which is a slight increase, just $42,000 from the prior year. I know in Jim's budget letter, he can kind of explain, we're kind of tapering off on these, the hotel motel and the sales tax funds from increasing as they have in the past. And then we have about the same amount budgeted for expenditures out of this fund. You can see the property tax relief, that's where that transfer will go back into the general fund, 2.3 million. The officer equipment and to pay for the vehicles and the equipment, that all goes back to the general fund also. And a lot of the other things, you know, we've talked about in detail. There's a transit bus purchase budgeted this year. Any questions on any of those items? So here's a good positive slide we like to show.
Yes.
Here's just a recap of our deficit accounts and what the balances were in the past, you know, four years. So once we make the transfers for this current fiscal year FY '17, those will all be, all be gone, so.
That's awesome.
Any questions on that? And here's just a recap of our projected legal debt limit. You can see for FY '17, we are going to go up above the 70% that we'd like to stick to based on the larger projects that we have going on all at once. But then we're projected in '18 to fall back down to 66% of our debt limit, so. Based on this budget and these capital projects. And that's all I had. If anybody has any questions or, and if there's any more detail you'd like to see next week, I can add it.
I thought it was well presented.
Okay, thanks.
You guys, questions or comments?
Are we entertaining any thoughts of saving a few pennies on the levy?
Well, I mean, that's always something for entertainment.
Is there any interest in me even talking about it?
I'm ready to move forward, Jim.
There's one. Anybody else?
I'd care your comments.
My only, I still, when I started this process, I had some suggestions for where we could save some money. And I still am at that position where I think we could save maybe four cents off our levy and make it up in the library fund. I'm still in that position. I know the rest of you haven't been really here to entertain that thought, but I still want to throw it out there.
That's what I do, maybe. Because...
That's my position.
Does anybody else have entertainment that they want to? Okay. All right then, we're going to move forward. Thank you, Stephanie. Certainly appreciate all the hard work and the net. Thank you. Next, we have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance prohibiting the constitution, prohibiting the construction of wells within the city limits for use of potable water source. Mr. McGregor?
Yet again, this is an ordinance that would restrict non-potable wells in the area of south and, I got corrected on the potable-potable.
Thank you.
No, I wasn't correcting you, sorry.
That's all right.
It's a, it's an area to restrict because of the free agents that are in the dirt. DNR's recommendation to do this, so if there's any questions, I'll answer those.
Do you guys have any questions, Mike?
I don't.
No.
We can wait with that reading?
I think we can. You guys good with that?
No reason.
Yeah.
No reason not to.
Okay. Number four, resolution approving bond purchase agreement for general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2017B. Steph, who's doing it? Jim?
This is a, we're going to be going through the process of selling $10 million of bonds, right at that amount. 2.2 million for the police department. The other 7.7, 7.8 million in that range for a combination of projects. The flood wall being the primary piece. The other components are three separate TIF projects, the roundabout at West and West Burlington, Agent Street, Agency Street west of Roosevelt and Agency Street east of Roosevelt, setting funds aside for all three of those projects. Travis did plan on being here this next week. Their goal for next week's session will be to present the actual sale numbers, sales numbers for you to accept at that point with the interest, whatever the interest payments are going to be off of that schedule. The actual bond repayment schedule is already set for that, working that within... that, working that within our, the portion that's backed by geo-debt is worked within our existing debt levy that we're trying to maintain and move forward.
Okay. Good. All right. Number five, resolution approving white boxing at depot for Greer's Restaurant.
Matt Murray called me and asked if we could leave this till the end of the meeting, he can't be here, he's at work, and tell him then.
We can wait. Next, we have a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between Des Moines County, Des Moines County Secondary Roads and the city of Burlington for the construction of Madison Avenue.
Yes, I'm Bob Wright, the city engineering manager, and I just wanted to clarify that memorandum of agreement is on Madison Avenue South to, forgive me, from Kastner Street to Nikona Place. So they estimate that at about 66,000, our share, 50%. And we'll work closer with them throughout the future budget season, so this doesn't come as a mid-year, you know, surprise.
How far south does this go?
It's Nikona Place.
Nikona?
Yes.
That's our responsibility.
They estimate 50% of that section is our responsibility.
Do you know how far out, are they gonna go?
They're going much further down. I think all the way, yeah.
Sure needs it.
They split out three different divisions there.
Yeah, okay.
You guys good?
Yes.
It gets paid out of a miscellaneous street account.
Needs to be done.
A player to be assigned later to cover the deficit on that. Fortunately, we have enough in road use tax to cover it, but that is a discussion that I asked Nick to have with the county to make sure that as they're doing these projects, they don't just drop them on us, that he's in, knows what's going on with them, and can get them incorporated into the budget. And someone may have been, been informed, but it certainly didn't get passed through the system.
Purple and gray, looks good there.
Way to pay attention to the detail. All right. Number two, resolution approving an agreement with French Reniker Associates to perform construction staking for the roundabout intersection of West Avenue and West Burlington Avenue.
Yes, I'll address that as well, as far as, this is the construction surveying and staking for the West Avenue, West Burlington Avenue roundabout, fixed fee there of $20,800. This enables the, the actual design firm, French Reniker, to do the staking ahead of our bidding and construction.
You guys good?
Now, the actual construction oversight is something you'll do internally?
That is correct, we'll do that internally.
Yeah.
And the, yeah, the concrete inspections.
You feel good about handling that?
Yes, sir, I do.
We feel good about you handling it.
I feel good about it.
All right.
Thank you.
And we've done a lot, a lot of these projects in the, we have a different setup this year for how our projects are proceeding, we're using a lot more outside engineering firms. And just, it's reflective of the, we're trying to do it internally with staff that, with too few staff to do the work that was necessary to do it all internally, so things were continually falling farther and farther behind. In an effort to try to get caught up, they're doing, trying to figure out where are the spots that they can cost effectively put their time and efforts into buying down project costs.
Good.
And yet, still farming out a lot of the work, and this is an area where specifically the roundabout that, we wanted to stay as much out of that as, as we could, use someone who's had experience with that.
Sounds smart to me. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Number three, we have a resolution awarding bid for construction of home at the southwest corner of South Fifth Street and Maple Street through the neighborhood stabilization program. Mr. Tisland?
This is our project through the NSP program, where you see bids at the end of last year, three bids in the amount ranging from 132,000 to 170,000 for construction of a new single-family home at that location. We do have 141,000, over 141,000 in NSP funds available, and would recommend going with low bid Flint Creek Construction for 132,000 to construct a new single-family home. We do have an identified purchaser that'll, that's on the list for set date, that'll come up at the next meeting to do a purchase agreement with. This is a three-bedroom, two-bath home at that corner, and purchaser does have to meet income requirements and other requirements of the NSP program, but since we do have an identified purchaser, we can go forward with the construction of the home, and this will be the last project through the NSP funds, this'll probably close out the, the program after this home, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, I didn't understand what was going on there. Flint Creek is, where are they located?
They're out of Burlington.
Good deal.
Yep, we have two Burlington's and one Sperry for the bidders, so all fairly local.
Good, 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 good.
Eric, is that goes to sell to the person buying it, that's based on their ability to pay?
Their ability to pay, they have to qualify for a fixed-rate mortgage, and then they can only pay a certain percentage of their actual income, and they have to be below 50% of the area meeting income, so it reduces their ability to actually pay for a new home considerably based on their income, and then they have to qualify for a fixed-rate home, and then it's a certain percentage of that, so we sell the, we will be selling this house for considerably less than what it'd actually cost to construct, but that's part of the NSP program, the requirements for that. But we, just finding someone that qualifies for a mortgage, fixed-rate mortgage, making 50% or less of the area meeting income was a challenge, but we did find a qualified buyer on it, so.
That's a good deal. Are we good?
Somebody's gonna get a nice house, aren't they?
Thank you, I'm looking forward to moving in. Number four, resolution approving, sorry, resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Dennis C. Maines doing business as Yellow Cab Company. Any problems, sir?
No, just a real name.
Okay, good. Next is resolution approving amendment to the terms of Otter Island lease agreement. Mr. Tisland?
Some of these changes came forward previously after discussion, our city attorney drafted some language in items number 14 and 15. There was some discussion with the Riverfront Advisory Committee as well as council about the lease amounts, and this did go for further discussion by the Riverfront Advisory Committee on February 13th. They recommended approval, five to one, of the current lease agreement in front of you. So a couple of the other changes was making, that they recommended was making the fee non-refundable upon payment to the city of Burlington, as well as having the site numbers visible from the Mississippi River affixed to the structure. Was discussed on the fee rates going, the one that did not vote to recommend approval of this wanted to see it doubled immediately, the rest were more comfortable going gradually. This change has the resident fee lease amount go up $50 annually, and the non-resident lease amount go up $100 annually. One note they did wanna see was in the August 2021, have the non-county resident be 1,200 instead of 1,100, that would essentially double it within that time period, but it would increase the last year by 200 instead of 100, so.
You guys good with that?
I'm not good with the fees. I think we discussed as a council that we would double those in this year, if I remember, I go up to 500 for resident and 1,200 for non-resident. At least that's what I remember recommending. That's not, that's not an unreasonable.
Right, did they, did they explain why they wanted to go with this versus...
This was presented to them as a, on all of our leases in the past, or a lot of our leases, we've had a gradual increase for individuals that aren't aware of lease increase doubling, although may seem insignificant, is still an impact to them, and so bringing that in gradually is what past practice has been.
I remember saying that we were gonna raise it, I don't remember saying doubling it right off the bat, but...
If, if there's a desire to change it to, as a, as a group to see that be an immediate double, but, I mean, that can be modified for your consideration this next week.
That's not at all unreasonable, I mean, that's pretty prime Riverfront property if you've gotta vote, pretty cheap.
$300 is a bargain.
Still cheap.
$300 is a bargain, that's for sure.
$500 is a bargain, plus 1,200 if you don't pay taxes in the city of Burlington.
I'm fine with it as is, but we'll go with the, let's, are, do you guys wanna change that, do you guys wanna have that changed for next meeting?
I don't know. I mean, I can see both sides where raising it all at once is like a bit of a shock for those people who have the lease and are, but I do understand that it's also not that much for a year, so I'm kind of a bit torn.
I guess if it would go up $100 a year instead of $50 a year, that would get us there quicker, and it wouldn't be as much of a shock, but at least it would get us, would get us to somewhere we want to be.
You definitely should go up, there's no question about that.
So if we set August of 2018, it'd be 400, the next year would be 500.
Non-residents are already going up 100.
Yeah, so we'd make it 150, let's say, yeah.
I could... A little bit better.
But what's the maximum we wanna get to, is the, is the final question that we need to ask.
500 and 1,200 for what I mentioned before.
Okay, so then, if you did, if 2018 was 400, then 2019 it'd be 500, that would get you to your max. And then, if you did, so it'd be 850, and 950, and then 1,100 for the following year, so is that okay with you guys?
I'm fine either way.
Wait, you have that, Eric?
So just by, by what year would you like it to be, that double, and then we can just...
Are you guys saying by next year?
By 2019 or 2021?
So still by the same line, though? By 2021?
No, it'd be 2019.
By 2019 have it double?
2019.
Okay, we'll put that, factor that in, what that amount would be.
Is that all right?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
I don't think that's unreasonable.
Okay, you good, Mr. Tisland?
Eric, there's additional language in there in regards to the property needing to be able to pass an inspection.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you know how that works for, as we enter this August, where that has not been part of the contract language before, and you have, have a couple of properties may not pass that inspection? How do, how are they treated, or is that something that still needs worked out with the attorney?
Well, it does, state condition shall be rectified within six months.
So they'd have that to begin with?
They have six months to begin with, and then we'd go back and inspect it.
Okay, we good?
Yep.
Are you gonna leave that on the consent calendar? It's okay with me if you do.
Everybody's fine with it, might as well just leave it on there. Next is a consideration of purchase agreement for the property located at the southwest corner of South Fifth Street, Maple Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions for March 20th, 2017. Mr. Tisland?
It's just a set date, that will have more details on the individual that's looking to purchase the home as described previously.
We have a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Greenway Burlington Associates for encroachment into Valley Street Right-of-Way at 2312 Valley Street, Burlington, Iowa, March 20th.
This was discussed previously at Stone Garden Apartments, some, had some further discussion and some modification to the gate on Valley Street, and bringing that back with some additional conditions on it.
Good. Then we have consideration of an ordinance vacating a portion of Gannon Street and Whittaker Street right-of-ways adjacent to the property located at 1104 Gannon Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Again, set date for property near Brockway Mechanical, west of Osborne Street, looking to vacate some roads that they only have, or they have property surrounding and adjacent to, so no other access to.
And then we have consideration of an ordinance vacating the alley running from Columbia Street to Washington Street between Front Street and Main Street, Burlington, Iowa.
It's the alleys, Drake, the Drake Restaurant owns the property completely surrounding that alley, and they've requested to vacate it.
And then we've got a hearing for consideration of designation of Deer Point Estates Urban Renewal Area and the Urban Renewal Plan and Project for April 3rd, so, big fun. All right, moving to discussion items. Treasury report.
Okay, January's treasury report was in your packet. I don't know if you guys looked through it, had any questions, that I can point out a couple of things, like the flood mitigation project, when we bond for that, that won't be a deficit anymore. Same with Mazel project, we're gonna cover that, and the other ones that are running deficits right now are like our property maintenance and vehicle maintenance, and that's because we're always a month behind in billing out those services. And then, of course, the golf course and the Recplex, which we've talked about earlier, that we're gonna make transfers to cover those. I don't know, Jim, if there's anything that you wanted to point out?
The biggest deficit account, I think, on there in the capital projects is...
Flood mitigation.
The what?
Flood mitigation.
Flood mitigation, that's 200,000, that has, that has, I don't think, we haven't received any payments yet.
We have not, and we don't know how much we're getting yet for our tax increment.
No. The other is address a random cleanup at 633,000 or so. That still hasn't hit a closeout on that project, I assume that they still have some seeding to clean up as the season. If we get 60-degree weather again, we'll do a transfer, we've got the, the ability, we've certified the debt, and that'll get covered with TIF funds, and our hope is that we have that project closed out by the end of the year and can clean it up.
And have to seed in April generally.
Those are the, I think, the ones that stood out to me.
Yeah.
And that, there's no, none of the expenditures that look like they're out of line compared with your ideal percentage, looks pretty good, well, building code 70% is, it looks like we're in pretty good shape.
That's, and that, for Eric, I think, building code, is that some tree contracts that you've had, that you front-loaded the cost?
Yeah.
You've done, I think, like 80,000 out of 110, or something like that?
Yeah.
The other one was insurance?
Well, and we pay insurance all at one time, so...
It's an annual payment.
All right.
You guys satisfied?
Thank you.
You good, Mr.? Awesome. Okay, next we have an Apollo School redevelopment proposal, FGP Development.
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Broke the mic.
Jesse Caston, Terrace Real Estate. So Zach and I both were tasked with getting this property marketed. There's been a little bit of information out there, I thought I'd clear this up a little bit, that it's been on the market for a couple of years. We actually had it on the market for three months, so as, as you guys remember, we were here in the fall, Zach was really, saved it, so. Anyway, so it was a three-month process, ended January 21st, it was an RFP process that we went through. Zach, I believe a couple of weeks ago I wasn't here, but kinda went through all the developers and users that we sent it to, so. This is the second of the two proposals, so FGP Development, Nick and Russ. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Nope, just thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present our project tonight, and we look forward to continue discussion. Just like to get right into it.
Introduce, introduce yourself.
I'm very sorry, I saw the last video and the same guy did. Nick Godey, FGP Development in Anawim Housing out of Des Moines, Iowa.
Thank you.
I am here with my partner, Russ Fraser, and our other partner, Brian Phillips, wasn't able to make it tonight, but FGD, FGP Development is a coalition of three partners, Russ Fraser, Nick Godey, myself, and Brian Phillips. A little bit about us, Russ has served as the president of Anawim Housing for approximately seven years. Anawim Housing is a nonprofit real estate development company in Des Moines, Iowa, it's a nonprofit, and we focus primarily only in the Des Moines area. Russ has taken that program from around 300 units when he took it on to... Russ has taken that program from around three hundred units when he took it on to over six hundred right now, and we anticipate to hit the thousand, uh, units under management by the end of the, of two thousand seventeen. Uh, I'm Nick Godey, I serve as Anawim's Director of Property Development, and I've been with Anawim for approximately two years. Uh, prior to that, I served with another nonprofit developer in, in Des Moines, focusing in market rate housing and retail, uh, development. And prior to that, I was actually with Terrace Real Estate Group for a little bit with Jesse, uh, serving as Commercial Real Estate, uh, Property Manager there. And Brian Phillips, uh, he's, uh, much of the financial support for our organization and, and Russ and I are providing most of the experience in the development area. Uh, but Brian's no stranger to real estate, he's been in the transaction services business for over thirty years as a real estate broker, uh, many of them now with Terrace Real Estate Group, and Brian's had the vast experience between industrial, agricultural, retail, multifamily, uh, transactions, both lease and sale. To discuss a little bit of our experience, I mentioned, I wonder if you should go through a few projects that I mentioned in the documents you've already received, uh, part today, but talk through a few of the projects that we have worked on or currently working on, just to show you the kind of breadth of experience that we've gone through. The project you're looking at right now is the Fort Des Moines, uh, historic site on the south side of Des Moines. We are part of a co-development of this project, uh, as you can see, six buildings. It'll end up being a hundred and forty-two units, uh, the former, uh, stables and housing sites for, uh, Fort Des Moines. So if you were a nurse or, uh, a black soldier in World War One, you were, you were going through Fort Des Moines pretty much regardless of where you were in the United States. This will be a similar type of capital structure that we're proposing for, uh, the Apollo site. Uh, it'll be low-income housing tax credits, it'll be historic tax credits, both on the federal and state levels, enterprise zone and, uh, traditional debt. Uh, I guess brownfield, uh, credits are involved in this as well. Here's an example of the existing structures that are in place, most of them have been vacant for a number of years, if not decades, and, uh, haven't been placed in service for quite some time. You can see, uh, good examples of the housing on the top, uh, left, and the bottom two photos, and then one of the stable prod, uh, buildings on the top right there. Uh, this is a project called Madison Flats, with, it's one that I completed when I was with Neighborhood Development Corporation. It's a thirty-unit market rate housing project, it was the first of its kind on the south side of the river, uh, in Des Moines, just directly south of Principal Park. Uh, the top left photo, um, is the site as it was prior to redevelopment. This is a brownfield site, we also used, uh, uh, enterprise zone tax credits and traditional debt. Uh, again, it was thirty units, all market rate, uh, we ended up hauling about two hundred loads of dirt from the site to a site in Nebraska, because no sites in Iowa are able to take the level of contamination, and then we backfilled the site up about approximately seven feet. So we're, uh, no stranger to, uh, difficulties along with projects. It's actually, uh, kind of helped, uh, and, and the purpose of it, neighborhood development was to catalyze other development, and it has, across the street and assemble, in a site that I helped assemble, on about, uh, five acres, is about two hundred and fifty units of more market rate housing in the city of Des Moines, again, straight south of Principal Park. The top right and lower left are some photos that we had taken, and then the, uh, the lower right, which unfortunately, you never know how it's really gonna turn out in a group setting, so it's kind of a little hard to see if it's a sample of the interior of one of the units. Uh, this is a project that we just closed financing on and, uh, will start, start construction here in the coming weeks, called Legacy Park. What we essentially did is recapitalize a portion of our portfolio, uh, over a hundred and thirty-seven units, fifty-one buildings and forty-one parcels. There's a mix of single-family, duplex, uh, three, four-unit, uh, type of building, all the way up to the apartments, the buildings that you see here, obviously I couldn't put everything in there, but, uh, we have a few historic structures where we decided not to utilize the historic tax credits on those. This'll be a, a, uh, a four percent low-income housing tax credit project alongside, uh, traditional thirty-year debt. So, uh, to talk about the project team a little bit, obviously, um, you know, I'm not one that sees the world, you know, circulating around myself, but as the developer, you are the center of the universe and everybody circulates around you, and you are responsible for everything that everybody does. So there's a number of important players that we have involved, uh, that, you know, we couldn't do the project without. Our architects, Shiftwin Associates, has done a number of historic rehab projects, uh, as long, as well as Lytech projects, and they're, uh, the, the top priority list of, of people that we need to work with on the project. A close second is our general contractor, SS Construction, uh, they've been a big help leading up to now and helping us establish, uh, the prospective budget guidelines that we need to work from. Uh, civilman engineer, obviously, we, we want to look to work with somebody local, uh, that has more familiarity with the code, with, uh, the people that we need to deal with at the city level. We'll be working with the National Equity Syndicator, approximately thirty-two syndicators throughout the United States that, uh, will try to get the, uh, the best deal with on, on our tax credit price. Uh, Love Funding will be our debt provider, they're out of Columbus, Ohio, and they'll provide the, uh, the HUD debt product that we'll be utilizing on the project. We're deciding between a two, two twenty-one D product or a two twenty-three F. State Historic Preservation, uh, Office in, in Des Moines, obviously, we'll be interacting with them very regularly and, and, um, they'll be an important part of the process. Iowa Finance Authority, uh, they'll be regulating the, uh, tax credits and tax and debt bonds that we'll be utilizing. Obviously, the property manager is a long-term risk mitigation source, and I'll talk specifically to that in a little bit. And obviously, the city, in, in any project that we do, we need to work closely with the city to make sure that both goals, uh, goals of the city and the, and the project are being met. Um, again, a little bit about property management. Property management represents the single most, or the single highest level of, of risk for any project as, as, as an asset. It's a financial asset at the end of the day and investors need to make a return. In our particular case, the financial rewards are, are less concerning as we are with the, uh, with the requirements imposed upon us by the federal government, the state government, and all the funding sources that we'll be utilizing. So we'll be wanting to utilize a highly experienced, highly reputable, uh, firm that specializes in low-income housing tax credits, so that we can make sure not only we're meeting the, the basic minimum requirements, but we're constantly fostering a good, uh, rapport with the, the community that we work within. You know, in the event that we have a poor, uh, property management, uh, scenario on the project, we risk the long-term, in the long-term, having to, uh, basically cut a check back to our equity investors in the form of what we call credit capture risk. Part of the property manager's responsibility at the basics are gonna be criminal background check, rental history, uh, references from other landlords, and then, uh, we have the requirements, the financial, uh, underwriting for each individual tenant, as we'll be serving tenants that are at sixty percent of area median income, uh, or slightly below. I'm not sure this is gonna work and we'll see if it does, but, uh, it's a, it's a, you know, right now drones are, are the fun thing to play with, and so we had SS Construction, uh, they offered up to head down to the school, take some drone footage, and, and it's a quick video on, on, uh, the school itself. There is some music, but it's okay that it's not playing, because it just, it didn't really add that much value to it. So I'm sure nothing that you haven't all seen before, but, you know, what, the verbiage that they put in the, in the video really expresses what we're, we want to do here is preserve the history of the building, but really put it into the twenty-first century of, of, uh, what we want tenants to be able to live in and providing safe and affordable and decent housing.
I think you're wrong. I think the music really would have added to the effect.
Well, the music that they had in there, I'm not so sure. We, we can move on. It seemed to get, I think it might have started over. Okay, okay. Eric, can you progress it to the next, oh, thank you. So, uh, we studied the site and the historical drawings that we, uh, received as part of the RFP and some digging that we did, and overall, we'll, we plan on, uh, completing seventy-seven units of those twelve studios, thirty-one bedrooms, twenty-three two-bedrooms, eleven three-bedrooms and likely one more bedroom unit. And the mix of unit types will be varied on each floor, um, and throughout the, the entire project. Uh, we won't be utilizing the auditorium and, or, nor the gymnasiums. We will be rehabbing the auditorium and the gymnasiums, but, uh, both of those, or I guess all three of those spaces will be utilized as community space. Uh, we, we look to try to engage the community in utilizing those spaces or providing workout areas for the tenants. You know, in, in some of the digging that we've done, we'd like to reach out to some of the past, uh, potential users of the building, uh, I understand there was an art program, um, and some of the other potential community users that we could partner with, so the, the, the spaces and essentially sitting there collecting dust, we really want to be able to showcase, case that space. All the apartments will come, uh, standard amenities of appliances, we'll have, as I mentioned, the community space. There is actually green space within the building that we'd be able to create, well, not within the building, but within the confines, there's a courtyard, uh, will provide two-to-one parking and, uh, standard internet access for each tenant. Again, showing the, the layout of, of, of the units. Again, the center blocks that you see there are unutilized, the bottom one is the auditorium, and I didn't show the gymnasiums on either side. And then the upper block that's blank, uh, is the courtyard area and also, uh, I can't remember what else is specific in that space, but, uh, that was the lower level, uh, that we'd be able to use. And we were really happy to see that we could actually utilize the lower level, lots of tall windows for egress and, uh, a lot of good usable space down there. We'll have some remediation, obviously, to do, uh, potentially mold and other things, and things to do to make sure that the build, there's areas in the building that don't have water problems in the future, but I've, so that's all back, uh, put into the construction schedule. Again, the first floor and the second floor, I don't know if we need to spend much time unless somebody has some specific questions. Project sources, so you can see we have a total budget, the sources of just over sixteen million, six of that coming from low-income housing tax credits, uh, about six hundred and fifty coming from workforce housing credits, uh, state and federal credits at around six million combined, uh, two-point-six in a two twenty-three F, uh, loan, and then the proposed hundred percent fifteen-year TIF. On the uses side, we have acquisition, uh, at the proposed hundred thousand, construction of twelve million, and the remainder of, uh, professional fees, interim fees, financial fees, all the things that comes along with the architect, the engineer, uh, origination of the debt, uh, the variety of fees that goes along, the bond adducement and things like that. So I, I'd like to spend a little time just, you know, making sure that we have a, a good idea of what Lytech is and what Lytech is not, because I know it's not everybody's favorite discussion in, in the, in the, in the boardroom, but obviously, uh, you may know it was established in nineteen eighty-six and was really established as a replacement for public housing, which was failing in many cities, and, uh, Chicago being one of those, uh, good, or bad instances of failure. Uh, it's dictated by Section forty-two of the Tax Code, and I wanted to point out the difference between the nine percent and the four percent tax credit. My understanding is that previous projects have been, uh, proposed for this building, uh, but those have been utilizing the nine percent, which is a competitive, uh, source of funding that, you know, for this year, for example, there is about twenty-five applications put in for the nine percent, and we anticipate probably ten to eleven being awarded. Whereas we're utilizing the four percent tax credit, which is a non-competitive, uh, source of financing, obviously less, but it'll be used in conjunction while we, we'll have to, uh, issue, have, um, tax exempt bonds issued through the Iowa Finance Authority. And so the, the source of that four percent, as long as we meet the basic design requirements and income requirements, that'll be a sure source of financing. Uh, we'll be serving tenants that, uh, earn sixty percent or less of AMI, uh, and in Burlington, Iowa, that's approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars for a family of four, uh, and that actually represents about thirty percent of the, uh, the folks here in, in, in Des Moines, excuse me, that's a, that is a Des Moines County number. Uh, what it's not, it's not a grant, it's not public housing, it's not the pub, the project. So all of our tenants, you know, they'll have to have a job, they'll have to have a source of income, assets, uh, and it's really designed to be a step up versus, uh, you know, a long-term handout, and we help those folks to kind of transition through that portion in time of their life. Uh, here's some examples of the tenants that we'll be serving that we, we have in our existing portfolio of tenants, uh, nurses, teachers, bus drivers, janitors, hotel staff, uh, fast food workers, waitresses, and gas stations tenants, just to name a few. Uh, these are all people that we need to, uh, kind of function in our daily economic lives, and, uh, that level of income doesn't always provide them the best opportunity for safe and affordable and decent housing. Uh, a lot of times we get a question about, well, Nick, you just listed all these sources, what about your skin in the game? You're develop, you're the developer, shouldn't you have some skin in the game? Well, our skin is really the long-term risk associated with the operations of the property. And in the, in the sense of the, the Lytech world, we're gonna sell the project to an investor, but they're, and they're gonna own approximately ninety-nine percent of it, and they're gonna make us retain one percent ownership so that we have a long-term responsibility associated with that property and to make sure that it's managed well, it's cared for, we're a good, uh, uh, community partner. Again, I mentioned the recapture risk, they have us there for the, the, uh, uh, performance assurance, and, you know, we're also responsible to the IRS, IFA, SHPO, MPS, or National Park Service, I have Department of Revenue and our equity source. So we, we have a long-term responsibility for earning that, that developer fee. Uh, here's the timeline of the project, and due to the nature of the funding sources that we, we would be going after, uh, there is, uh, you know, a little more time than I know that I think some folks here would like to see, but, uh, with this setup of, of sources, we can have a, a good level of assurance that we'll be able to complete the project. So, uh, we're assuming in March, you all are gonna be making a selection of who the developer will be, and at that point, we'll start what's called the Part One Historic Tax Credits. As you all know, um, it's not yet in the historic registry, so putting it on the registry will be part of that. Based on the experts that we've talked to, we, we feel there's a, a very good chance that it will be put on the register, and then it'll comply, or it'll qualify for what's moving forward in the Part Two, which is really the design aspects, making sure that there's a, a substantial rehabilitation on the building to warrant, uh, funding the project with those, that credit source. And we move forward to the Lytech award, along the way of us doing these other parts, we'll be working on the Lytech application and award and the things that go along with that. Uh, we'll plan on closing the partnership in December and start construction, uh, January eighteenth. And then we anticipate, uh, around a year for construction to be placed in service in nineteen. So I know there's a few more slides there, I just kind of put them there just in case there was other questions, but I know, uh, it's a complex process and I, and I'm hoping that I can answer any questions or objections or anything that, uh, you know, we can use our time.
Questions, council?
Well, my main question was, and you answered it about how, how you're gonna get those tax credits, 'cause like, like you said, the last group that came here, they weren't able to get those tax credits, but you answered my question.
Yeah, and that really has to do with the timing, and it's really tough with a nine percent project on, on commingling that with a, with a historic project, so.
Nothing else?
We got a three-hour drive back, you might as well.
Make one additional comment to Nick's comments, 'cause I think we appreciate, and, uh, your willingness to, uh, hear our proposal and, and we have the opportunity to work, uh, regularly with a hundred-plus-year-old buildings, and they come with a challenge, uh, every one of them, and, uh, this one is certainly no exception. And I think our, our thought to it is that, uh, to look at the investment that I think it's gonna take to get this building done, it's going to come down to, what is it really, what's the per-unit cost? we would encourage you to, to focus your decision. That being said, it doesn't necessarily have to be our proposal to that, but look at the big picture and the long-term investment you want to see on that property. Doing it piece at a time, or, you know, I think what we're looking at is a big, large-scale effort here to bring it all back into a condition that the community can be very proud of. And so, I think that's probably the challenge that we would like to leave with you, is the thought of bringing this full of the level investment we're talking about here and the full resources that it's going to take to get it, to get it to that point.
It's going to take some resources.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys coming down. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you.
And yeah, the, I tend to, our goal from a staff perspective was to put this back on the next work session for a chance for you to think through what you've had for the proposals from the two different firms, allow you to have some discussion about what you liked or didn't like about the different ones, and if you're at that point comfortable making a decision to move forward with one or the other, or to decide not to work with either of them and to look for an alternative avenue. If we're able to get, get through that meeting and you have a selection that you want to move forward with, I think that's going to involve setting a public hearing on a urban renewal project. It'll have a, the soonest that I think that we could get anything where you have the public hearing held or you can do the notification process would probably be the first meeting in May, is my guess, seeing how timelines have worked on other projects. So we've got a ways of time to work through this if, if you do end up moving forward with one of them. And I think we have all of your contact information. In case we have any, anything that the council comes up with, we can get it forwarded on to you to make sure that any questions that are sitting out there get addressed.
Sounds good.
And we appreciate you coming up to do this. Anawim is a neat, a neat program, very, somewhat familiar with the work that you do up in Des Moines. I know this is on the side and not part of Anawim, but you come from a good background. I appreciate that.
All right. On that note, let's finish on a good one. Gas up in Burlington, not West Burlington on your way back. We appreciate that. All righty. Okay, next we have an animal ordinance, pot-bellied pigs. Major Grimshaw.
Counselor, Mayor. Darren Grimshaw. I was asked to do a little bit of research and look into the idea of an ordinance that was proposed by Christina Hancock, I believe, about a month ago. She'd approached council and asked if there could be a review of ordinances allowing for the ownership of pot-bellied pigs, miniature pigs, or micro pigs, as they're referred to. I've done quite a bit of research. I'll give you some information, kind of give you some insight into some possible ordinance ideas, some of the information that I've found from other jurisdictions and how they've handled this issue in the past. But just to let you know, first of all, pot-bellied pigs, because there is quite a variation. Originated in Vietnam, the pot-bellied pig, but there's been variations since then. The micro and mini pigs are sometimes a cross of breeds, but typically, the pot-bellied pig or the pet pigs weigh, they're advertised sometimes to weigh twenty to thirty or forty pounds, but more than likely, the average is anywhere from sixty to two-hundred pounds is the weight of these pot-bellied pigs.
A pot-bellied pig can get up to two-hundred pounds?
Larger, yes. So currently, we do have an ordinance in Burlington that restricts livestock to include pigs or porcine, swine, inside the city limits. So that's part of the reason why Ms. Hancock came to the city councils, because she has an interest, obviously, in owning a pet, a pot-bellied pig as a pet. Our current ordinance does not allow for that unless there's an exemption by the enforcement officer, the animal control officer, that obviously answers directly to the chief of police for a livestock exemption. That's an application that's done. And through that process, the person that's asking for the livestock exemption would have to have their residence inspected, they would have to make sure that they meet certain conditions as far as elimination of animal waste, proper housing conditions to make sure that they eliminate the concerns of noise, smell, anything that might affect neighbors, and then they would have to conform with the other stipulations of the current animal control ordinance. State code does not recognize or differentiate pet pigs or pot-bellied pigs from other livestock. A pig is a pig to the state of Iowa. We have to be cognizant of that, obviously, because of law enforcement's role if we assume responsibility of those pot-bellied pigs, whether through abandonment, stray, if they get loose. Law enforcement and animal control, obviously, would be responsible for containing and housing the animal. Typically, our local ordinances around the state vary, but I have found through numerous different cities that I've spoken to, both in Iowa, California, and in Nebraska, law enforcement's typical response was, we didn't know we had a pot-bellied pig ordinance, meaning that they just don't have a lot of issues or concern with it. However, they did make comment that typically what they find is, it's not the responsible pet owner that understands or has done research on a pot-bellied pig that they have a problem with, it's the one that thinks they're cute when they're about three weeks old, that now, six months later or a year later, realizes that that eight-pound piglet that they originally bought now weighs a hundred and sixty pounds and is ruining all of their furniture in their yard. But with that said, there are a number of local ordinances that have a lot of good information contained within them that obviously could be considered. Law enforcement's concerns, obviously, are what do we do with abandoned pigs? Or pigs that all of a sudden get too large or too cumbersome for the people to manage? It usually falls on the hands of the Humane Society, animal control, the animal shelters, and law enforcement. So those are obviously issues that we need to consider. I did have conversations with our local Humane Society. They are not interested at all. Not that they have any opinion one way or the other, they know that pigs have been known to make very good pets for people that are responsible and understand what it takes to own a pot-bellied pig or a micro pig, but they do not want to have any involvement with the housing, care, adoption of pot-bellied pigs or micro pigs. That does bring up one other issue that we need to be aware of. If we do come up with abandoned or stray pot-bellied pigs and are pets, we have to conform with state code, and more importantly, we would have two options then if the owner could not be located, and that is either through a rescue service for pot-bellied pigs, which there are some, they're limited, or euthanasia, obviously. So those are considerations, but the Humane Society is not willing to take that on themselves. And then, of course, the other big issue of concern is veterinarians. Most of the ordinances require that the pigs are annually certified by a vet, that they're spayed, neutered, that they are current on their vaccinations, and that they meet certain height or weight requirements in order to meet a city ordinance. Typically, a lot of jurisdictions don't have veterinarians maybe that will specialize or take pet pigs into consideration. We do have two veterinarians here in Des Moines County that will give vaccinations and care after and give authorization and certification to pet pigs. Currently, our local ordinance that we have, with a few modifications, I think could work for those that have researched it and want to own a pet as a pig, or a pig as a pet, that they could make application to the city of Burlington through our enforcement officer or animal control and through the chief's office. They would have to show that they've, they have proper facilities, proper fencing, proper housing for the animal, that it meets the current restrictions as far as distance from neighbors or residences, and some of just the basic things that need to be considered, obviously. The fact that miniature cute pigs at ten or twelve pounds grow up to be fifty, sixty, eighty, two-hundred-pound pigs. They're very, very smart, they learn quickly, they tend to manipulate owners that aren't well-versed on how pigs handle themselves. Obviously, if you live in a condo or an apartment, they recommend not owning a pig. They have to be outside a lot, their natural tendency is to root, but apparently, they do make good pets, but there's a lot of arguments whether or not you should have them around small children, around large dogs, because it's kind of a predator-prey type situation. That's kind of a quick overview of the pot-bellied pig inquiry, kind of what we need to maintain and look from a law enforcement standpoint and from a city of Burlington standpoint of view on what happens if the pigs are abandoned or left stray, and we come across it, because then it would fall into our control, obviously. So there's, those are some of the answers I hope kind of make it a little clearer. Like I said, I think our current ordinance, with a few modifications, would allow the city at least to make sure that we don't have someone that's housing a hundred-and-fifty-pound pet pig if they live in an apartment or a condo, or that they do have yards and facilities and understand some of the circumstances that it requires to own a pig.
Are there cities that have enacted special ordinances for this issue?
Yes. I talked to the city of Des Moines, Tamwa, Fort Madison, Bellevue, Nebraska, I don't remember the name of the city out in California, but they have specific pot-bellied pig ordinances. And a lot of those ordinances restrict the numbers, the height, the weight, the annual certifications, what's required, how you can lose that certification on an annual basis, but a lot of it is to the specifics of, if you're going to own a pig, it might be up to a hundred-and-twenty pounds. Anything larger than a hundred-and-twenty-pound pet pig is not allowed in the city. People know going into that. The problem is, they're marketed much smaller, they're marketed as micros or minis, and you go home thinking you're going to have a forty-pound pig when it's fully grown, and two years later, you've got a hundred-and-eighty-pound pig in your house, and that's sometimes what happens. But apparently, everything I've learned and everyone I've talked to so far have said that they can make amazing pets, but as long as the owner understands what they're getting into and they fully realize what they will have living with them.
What, just, just talking to you, I mean, if you had to, to make the call your own self, what's your, just coming from, you know, Major Grimshaw, what's your recommendation? Looking at all the moving parts and the variables, what does Major Grimshaw say about that?
Personally, I don't have a problem with someone that wants to own a pig as a pet. There's a lot of positives that people have talked about. From the city's standpoint of view, as a major at the police department, I think just a couple of modifications to our current existing ordinance could be presented to council. We could make that change and use our existing ordinance without actually creating a separate ordinance for the ownership of pot-bellied pigs. And what would, the part of that requirement would be, the person that wants to own a pet pig inside the city limits would have to make application to the city through the animal control enforcement officer. That would be reviewed, where they live, their ability to house and care for the animal, and then certain stipulations would be, probably would be my recommendation.
What about, since, since this, but this is kind of a special deal, though. I mean, so much so that we've got to have in writing special, a special, special verbiage, so what do we do if this happens or that happens? So I mean, if it's going to be that much extra, should we consider extra expense if we're going to consider this? I mean, as far as, because it sounds to me like it's going to be a lot more trouble if something was to go wrong. I'm just, I'm just trying to look at it.
Yeah. Most, like I said, most cities that I talked to, law enforcement wasn't even aware that they had a special ordinance. Back in the nineties, pot-bellied pigs became kind of a fad pet. That's when they were introduced in the United States in the late, you know, early nineteen-nineties. Since then, it's kind of fallen off. I think a lot of people started realizing some of the difficulties of owning a pet pig. Like I said, there's very responsible owners out there that get along fine, but they are much different than dogs. I don't think there's a big cost that we would see. I don't know that we would see a lot of applications for the pot-bellied pig, but it would give us an opportunity to review where the person lives, what their opportunities are for providing housing, a yard, proper fencing, and to make sure the person has researched the idea of owning a pig.
What's our, what's our, do you know what our, our structure setup is right now? If someone was to have a pig and they didn't go through the proper, the proper channels?
They would just be violating the city ordinance that prohibits livestock from being housed within the city limits. Every once in a while, we'll get, especially on the outskirts of the city limits, we'll have someone that might want to keep chickens, they might want to keep maybe a miniature horse. We've had applications over the last twenty, thirty years from different residents looking to maintain livestock within the city limits, but I'm not aware of anyone that owns a pot-bellied pig currently within the city limits. I know of several people that live in the county that own pot-bellied pigs but not in the city.
As, as pets?
Quasi-as pets, yeah.
Hey, since, since we brought this up, though, I just need to get this square away. You can have chickens in, in your house, in, in city limits?
You have to have a special authorization for that. Yeah.
All right. Any other, any other questions?
Does that take care of the potential pot-bellied pig problem?
Are you?
Or you want to add some more peas on that?
Probably.
Potentially.
There you go. Are you guys good?
I'm, I'm happy with his recommendation that if we want to do it, we just add some to our current, to our current code, rather than try to come up with a whole new code for the whole thing.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be an all-encompassing, people would have to apply.
Yeah.
And have to, you know, pass. So I think that's a good idea. That's what I was kind of afraid of, was that we would have this ordinance and then people would just get pigs willy-nilly.
And even if you, every ordinance I came across requires an annual certification inspection of the, I mean, they have to, there's certain things, they're going to jump through probably more hoops to obtain a pet pig than they would a pet dog, but there is a licensing you go through and an annual certification and vaccinations and, yes.
Man, that was thorough. You're good, my friend.
Thank you. I'm not getting it.
Thank you, Major.
No other questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
We appreciate you, my friend. We've got, let's go to, since Mr. Murray's here, we'll go ahead and let you, we'll let you come now. This is resolution of bringing white boxing at Depot for Reer's Restaurant. Did you?
I don't think that we have anything from a staff perspective to really add. We did sit with Matt last week and just sort of talk through our, what the proposal was. I think that there is some willingness to have some of the items that are included in the white boxing proposal. Some of those items maybe be taken on by the tenant, but to also have a credit assigned within the rental terms to try to compensate for that, for some of those things that could potentially move in there. We mentioned the drywalling and some of those things, that finishing off the interior that could potentially be done like that, but I think those are some of the dollar, smaller dollar amounts in terms of what the overall cost is. One thing to mention from what Nick presented with up to a hundred-and-forty-six thousand that was recommended, that the council sent to Economic Development suggesting that they look at that as a funding source and they approved. When Nick developed that cost estimate, that's an, he tried to build in a contingency to cover the unknowns that can come up in this process, because you're, a lot of this is going somewhat off the cuff in terms of that line placement, this new sewer line to be created. You don't know what, what might come up in those kinds of things. So he wanted to... You don't know what might come up in those kinds of things. So he wanted to make sure he had a number that was high enough that you didn't get partway through a project, and he has to come back and say, "I was wrong. It's fifteen thousand more than what I originally said." And he also, I think, kind of wanted to stress that he's not looking to spend a hundred-and-forty-six thousand if it can be done cheaper. That being said, this was an item that the council showed favor towards back in August, showed favor towards in January, and recommended it go to Economic Development. And things have changed in the meantime. This last vote was a two-two split.
I have a question. Where is that, I know the answers to these, but where is the money coming from?
This is out of, we have an Economic Development sub-fund within local option sales tax. That fund has about three-hundred thousand at the end of this year total. That, so that's, it's set aside to do, I mean, we've done, the primary project that's been done out of that over the years, the biggest one that's taken the most money has been Dresser Rand site paying off that project from back in two thousand six, eight, two thousand eight, before us.
So, but basically then, granted this money, the, does come out of the budget, it is an undesignated seventy, right, seventy thousand kind of goes into the savings.
Council always has prerogative to make adjustments to what you do over time with priorities. That being said, as you have discussions about items such as adding the public safety, this would not necessarily be an offset. It wouldn't typically be considered an offset to it just by the nature of where the funding is. It's a cash balance that's sitting there. Now, part of that, though, was, as we dealt with Economic Development and the budget process and trying to figure out how to match that out, the Economic Development Fund did have a twenty-thousand-dollar annual cut to its allocation. So you could, I mean, technically, you could do, have considered more than that if you were doing it, but that was not part of the process to get to a balanced budget, which is to your point.
Right. So, but basically, this money is kind of, to put it simply, in a savings account, that money has been allocated over the years?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess now my question is for the individuals who voted against it. What was, can you reiterate your reasoning?
No, I don't think I need to do that. No, I'm glad, man, I'm glad you came back tonight because I guess last week I really didn't explain myself well. And I want to say this, I wish your son was here tonight. When I said, "No, it's no indictment on you as a person, no indictment is you as a businessman. I think you're a winner, and it's not personal feelings. If it was personal, I would have said, "Yeah," and hello, just because I like you. I think you're a winner. That being said, I have to step aside with personal feelings the same way that I stepped aside with my personal feelings when I said, when I voted yes for the tax increase. I did that. I didn't like the verbiage. I didn't like the way it was written down, knowing that I'm saying yes to a tax increase, and here we are where I didn't have protection on that line, or on the amount. My understanding was that even with the hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars, that there was no guarantee that it wasn't going to keep climbing. So maybe I had a misunderstanding, but if we can get the verbiage right, I'm still not against white box in the building. It just seemed like it just started climbing. It started at seventy-five thousand and it started climbing. And for me to be okay with okaying a number, especially after saying okay to a tax increase, at that time, I didn't like the way it was written. I wasn't okay with going forward with it. But again, I just want you to know it wasn't anything personal on you. Again, I think you're, I think you're one of Burlington's finest. I mean that. And personally, if it was personal, I would have said, "Yeah" a long time ago and just walked away from it. Again, can't make decisions that way, and I just want to make that clear. But I support what you're doing. I didn't feel comfortable at that meeting.
Right. So basically, the reason was because you were afraid that it was gonna grow and grow, even though, even though the economic development, they only up to a hundred-and-forty.
I don't, was it written that way at the?
It's an up to.
Okay, well, okay.
Yeah. So you were afraid that it would go past that?
Again, I was going in saying that with the recommendation, I spoke with staff's recommendation, they said seventy, they felt comfortable with seventy-five thousand dollars, and I was okay with that, with white box. That was the original. No? Am I saying that wrong?
No.
I don't think that staff ever came up with this. Matt had a seventy-five-thousand-dollar figure, and the first number that the staff ever came up with was, it was more like a hundred-and-twenty to a hundred-and-fifty.
I thought the original number was they would, that, that our responsibility was going to be. Somebody broke that.
My original number was a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand four hundred. So this number's actually come down since then after a discussion with.
Where was the, okay, where was the seventy-five-thousand-dollar?
That was the developer's number, and when that was provided, that when that was provided, we did stress that we didn't have anything yet, that we hadn't evaluated that, and there were some things that we thought were gonna be higher than that.
I've got, I've got original notes of me saying, saying, "I'm all in at seventy-five thousand." I don't know where I got that.
So the seventy-five thousand that you got was probably back in July. So this has been going about a year. Back in June or July, there was an LOI that was drafted by Mitch Taylor, and they, in that, they asked for seventy-five thousand dollars for capital improvements to go towards the white boxing of it. So there was rent in there. There was seventy-five thousand that was asked then, but that was before the city went through to see the sewer line and everything else. So that might be where the seventy-five thousand that you're talking about from.
And with that, when we got to August in that timeframe, you, part of what the council asked for then was for us to look at what it was gonna take to truly do the project, because we didn't think that everything was included in that LOI amount. And I don't know who said what in that meeting, but the proposal that came forward was asking us to put seventy-five thousand dollars towards it. As, and during the discussion, it was modified into us taking responsibility for getting it to a white box position, as opposed to giving him seventy-five thousand credit towards the project. We'd cover the white boxing. He would have a separate lease, but we needed to get those costs, which we didn't have developed until January. But regardless, it's still at that, we're at a point where the original number that Nick was able to put together was in that hundred-and-fifty range, and that still had, was a very tentative number. You pulled a few items out, and it does include a twenty percent contingency because we do recognize it.
Again, if you're good with it as it's rewritten anyways, doesn't matter, so we don't have to waste any time. We can just keep rolling. Is everybody else good?
No.
Um, I guess I would like to know then what Jim's original concern was. I just, I just kind of want, because there seems to be a huge confusion, both here and in the public. So that's why I'm kind of trying to really dig deep, is my only reasoning.
I go back to my original point, that if we're gonna have the place, I don't, it doesn't matter who's going to be in there. If, the way it is now is just an ugly appendix. And so if we are intent on developing the depot and we're selling it, and that'd be my first preference, if someone would step up there and buy it, that'd be great. Mr. Murray, you could be certainly welcome to buy it, anyway. Yeah, the line starts right there. Get in line, folks, anyway. Maybe Mr. Chairman wouldn't like that idea. I like the, know what the terms of a potential lease is going to be. That's kind of my hangup. A hundred thousand dollars is kind of my limit, too. That's kind of what I'm thinking.
I guess my, why? If it's not coming, if it's coming out of the Economic Development Fund?
But it's still our money.
It is, but it is going towards a good, either way, whether we sell it or not, it would be much more desirable if it was white boxed or had repairs done to it, basic maintenance that all citizens are expected to conform to.
That's another point, too. If we're going, if we're looking into, I mean, what are we gonna do? If we're looking into selling it, why, you know, don't we want to limit the amount of money that we put into the building? Why do we want to sink money until we're gonna turn around and sell it? To me, I'm not catching the.
Well, that's the part.
I would want to spend as little as possible on the building if we're trying to sell the depot. If we're gonna keep it and develop it, that's kind of.
I can't imagine anybody buying it, but are we, Tim, you brought that up in over, considering selling the building, right?
I think we should sell everything that we don't, that we've got, so that we can lower our cost of operation on an annual basis. Getting rid of the depot is but one of those items. When you improve a property, it increases its value. And we don't know, you made the comment right there. You don't know that we can even sell that property. I think we should, it'd be my opinion that we should make the improvements as we have, as we are able to capitalize on the private sector in investing in the building and doing what's necessary to white box it, is the terms that we've been doing, so that we can take part of the public's money and then part of the private sector to make it a functioning building again, and then move on. Or we should tear it down. And I, and that's not gonna be a popular choice at all with anybody.
Especially Amtrak.
And once it's, once there's a, I think that once we sit down and seriously consider marketing it, just like we did the Apollo building, and that we put together an incentive package, that we have an opportunity to sell the building. And if there's a tenant in there, it's going to make a buyer much more enthusiastic about purchasing the building when they know they've got some ready rent coming in.
Or, or that's the last thing the buyer wants in there, because he wants to turn it into who knows what. I mean, that's, that's an assumption you're making there that.
Well.
No, that's a businessman's, that's a businessman's preference. I mean, I'm.
To do what?
To have tenants in a building that if you've already got income coming in, and.
I think that depends on what you're gonna do with the building.
I'm, yeah, I'm sure that's depending, anything could happen, Bob, but I think from a businessperson's perspective, if there's an incentive package and if there's already a tenant in there, I mean, if the, if Amtrak had an office in there, I'm sure that there would be a lot more people ready to jump on it.
Yes.
But we've not been successful at that, and the private sector has been, so.
Tell me about the rental income.
Yeah, what kind of lease agreement are we talking about here now?
Kind of depends, but Jesse, could you kind of give us an idea of what we could potentially?
Do you want to let Matt talk first, maybe, and then we'll talk about that?
Sure. What, in regards to? So, well, I'm gonna go back to the July proposed amount, when it was a seventy-five-thousand-dollar capital that was gonna be put in by the city. At that time, it was a proposed lease of twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. So it was probably gonna, over a five-year term, which is what you'd be looking at for a lease. Basically, half of it was gonna go to the capital, and then the other half would go to cover, because there is gonna be, there's not currently taxes on the building, because it's city-owned. There will be taxes, it will be put on the tax roll. So there will be an increased cost there. Be an increase in the operations, you know, for the city's standpoint. Like janitorial, that's kind of been up in the air. I think that, you know, Matt, and I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth here. That's why I thought Matt would go first, maybe. But the janitorial, I think they were talking about, maybe they would take care of some of the, you know, restroom maintenance, and, because when you have a restaurant, you're gonna, as I said, all these costs are gonna be increased. But in the July, it was June or July in that proposal, it was twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, and then seventy-five-thousand-dollar capital investment.
Now, a market rate, if you have a, just a, if you had a pure, a spot that was white boxed, ready to be used, what would be a decent lease amount on that space in that location?
So here's the tough part, is that that space is a thousand square feet, or?
Twelve-twenty-two?
Twelve-twenty-two, hundred and square. So if I tell you ten dollars gross on a lease price, that may include a space that's five thousand square feet, so it's a little easier to amortize those costs that's gonna go into five thousand square feet compared to a thousand square feet. So that's where, you know, the tough part is for me just to say, "Yep, this would be the market rate for a restaurant space of twelve-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet in town."
But I guess my, my thought had been that you're probably realistically, that is about what you would rent space for. You were gonna find a spot that had been rehabbed and was ready to be occupied.
Yeah, I think it's really gonna come down to that capital improvement, you know, is asking, is gonna be put into the facility.
But about fifteen thousand a year revenue?
That's where you got seventy-five thousand.
And if it's fifteen thousand a year revenue, maybe, in that neighborhood, I mean, that's where you're talking about, is that good enough to justify the, you're spending a hundred-and-forty-six thousand to generate fifteen thousand of annual revenue?
Plus pay the taxes.
Plus pay the taxes. It doesn't cash flow for us, but part of the decision you have to make as a building owner who's got a building sitting vacant and underutilized and in need of being rehabbed is, do you feel that it's worthwhile to do that or not? Those are hard decisions, and you five have very different opinions about that.
Yes.
And the other issue, part of it I see, too, is, all right, so we put a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars in there with no flood protection. Now what?
What about flood protection?
We're not gonna have no flood wall down there.
As we built, as we talked tentatively last year in the lease terms, it talked about us having the responsibility to take the efforts that we were set up to do. So prior to the flood wall project down around the depot isn't designed until, I think, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. Up until then, you've got a buyer beware in terms of a leaseholder coming in, or leaser coming in and renting that space, because we're not taking responsibility. Now, even after that, we have the responsibility, if I'm reading that contract right, or the proposal, the, we have a responsibility to put in the flood protection efforts that we said. When a flood occurs, part of that is putting HESCO barriers around the parking lot. We do have that responsibility. If we don't take care of that, I think we have liability on us under those terms. But if we do the protection that we had, that we're set up to do, and you still have a flood event occur, you're, I think that's an in-between insurance companies on who covers what. But we're certainly living up to our expectations on it.
But we could, in theory, though, once the flood wall gets put in place, we'd have extra HESCOs available to use them someplace.
We'll have extra HESCO barriers, and if you, that, the project that goes there, I think the high watermark was maybe half a foot into the building? Is that, anyone here been here long enough to know anything? Twelve or fifteen inches? And I think the wall, that was sort of a berm that they're looking to put on the east side, and I don't remember the design work on that, whether it was a couple of feet or if it was a three-foot wall or what.
That was enough to go down two foot.
Two foot? So that's gonna be a permanent thing done on the east side. We have the ability to do it on the west side, but part of, I mean, part of the concerns that I would have from Nick's crew with this, the flood wall that you're doing, twenty-two hundred feet, lineal feet? For the whole thing, for the flood wall? Well, it's a lot.
It's over that.
You got, he has a, he has a lot of flood wall to put up in a, during, in a flood event, and they're talking, they were talking about two days to do that, two full days to put that flood wall up. And maybe you have the ability to have a separate crew that's doing the HESCOs on the other piece at the same time. Until we get to that, we don't know exactly how that flows through, but, you know, it's, this is still gonna, it's not like this is gonna be not, no more time-intensive thing to put flood walls up once we've got this project done. Is that fair? Kind of.
Fairly.
Fairly. You're allowed to point out when I'm wrong.
Matt, you wanna, you wanna come up and say anything, you can, anyone down here?
Probably.
Matthew Murray, twenty-fifty Highlands, so. I guess I, I'll start here. As it's been pointed out, we've been at this probably longer than most people have. As it's been pointed out, we've been at this probably longer than most people have. I'm going to pat myself on the back. I've been, I've been patient. I've been encouraged. You know, even Councilman Fleming, you said, and I quote, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Did I say that?
Yes, you did. You know, it's, you know, so all along, it seems like the process has moved along. And I've come here and and trying to work with council, trying to be cooperative here, not necessarily coming in here wanting everything for myself. I understand that the situation that the city is in. I think Councilwoman Wilson and Mr. Scott, along with Mr. Fano and the staff, I think, found an equitable solution by going to economic development. Obviously, by me standing up at that podium, talking to them was under permission of council. That means at least a majority of you voted for that. If you had concerns, why was I even talking to you? So obviously, at the time, the number one forty-six was out there. They saw the relevance in it. They saw the importance in it. Former mayor sits on that. He said that he's been at this thing way before long. He wants to remember and wants to get this depot project done. Now, in exchange for this, okay, we've been talking about what's the city commitment. Well, what's my commitment? Quarter of a million dollars of private investment going into this. When you took a vote a couple nights ago, if that vote would have turned out differently, I had right then and there, three investors were promising, willing to sign over sixty thousand dollars worth of their private money for the funding of that. Now it's on hold. I have a gentleman in California who was formerly from Burlington. When I wrote something on this on Facebook a long time ago, he got in touch with me and said, I think you have really a neat project here. He says, all I want to do in return is I want something to signify down there to represent my family at memorial. What he would do is pass through money to friends of the depot, up to seventy-five thousand dollars for grounds improvement. When I told him of the council's decision on a two-two vote, he said, my commitment to this now is in question. Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, council, what we're looking at here for up to a hundred and forty-six thousand in your property. I've had people say, Matt, continue to fight for it. Continue to fight for the depot. And I'm like, shouldn't the city be fighting for this? Isn't this your property? Isn't it in your budget that you're just going to pass a part-time nuisance inspector? What's the job of a nuisance inspector? The whole, private citizens like myself accountable for their property. Look at the depot. Broken windows, heating cement. It's dangerous. It needs to be fixed one way or the other. If I'm in the in the picture or not, it needs to be taken care of. It's a gateway to our community. When people get off from the west coast, from the east coast, and they stop in Burlington, what's the first thing that they see? What's their first impression of Burlington? Now, you walk into the great room and it's fantastic, but keep in mind, this is the hard work of these people. These are people that are willing to donate their private money to get nothing out of it to showcase our depot because they're proud of it. Is the council proud of their depot? Are you proud of your community? Because you have a citizen here that has decided to stay in Burlington to invest his own private money to put my own house on the mortgage because something I believe in. I would not be standing up here after a year and a half of time if I thought that this thing was not going to work out. The mayor gave me a compliment, said I'm a good businessman. I hope so. Because I'm not doing this simply just for the passion of the depot. I'm doing it because I think it could make money. It could be a tremendous partnership between the city of Burlington and Greer's LLC. So I guess you got to ask yourself, you know, is it worth it to you? You know, is it worth it to you? I promise, if you have faith in my proposal, I promise to be a good tenant of that building. I will do things right now that's probably not even getting done. I know myself, because I could say do it around my own house. You know, I plan on wanting to do some landscape. If it has to come out of my own pocket, I'll do it. Or if this gentleman in California comes through with this money, we'll do it together. I'll be out there every single morning, probably sweeping cigarettes up, butts up out on the platforms when people are waiting for the train. And keep thinking that in mind, too. You know, for a long time, people would go down there and sit at that depot waiting for Amtrak, which is never on time, and where do they go? They sit outside in a rail yard. Now, we got some beautiful stuff going on in the great room, but you know, what's it for? When you got a north and a south end building sitting there vacant, you mentioned flooding. Aren't you, even if I'm, walk out the door right now and say, listen, I'm washing my hands of this, I'm done. What are you going to do with the great room after all that grant money's been spent? All the people that have donated ten dollars, a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars to go to the depot, go to the great room, are you going to let it flood? Are you going to HESCO barrier? I mean, I think there's some some heady questions beyond me. I'm just happen to be maybe a peripheral vision right now, you know, either in council's way or hopefully embracing council.
Can I ask you a question about your?
Please, Mr. David.
Potential operation. What, how many seats in that area are you anticipating again?
Forty-five.
Sorry?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
Intimate setting.
Very, yes. I was trying to figure that out the other day when I was down there. Where are, where are all these people going to sit?
Well, we'd have to make some modifications because, you know, if you don't mind, just brag a little bit about it for a second.
Well, and I thought maybe you could set some tables up out in the great room that would expand your.
You know, well, we thought about that. I mean, obviously, I, I, you know, you know, excuse, you know, Officer Grimshaw was talking about pop telling hit, let's let's kill one big at a time. I mean, because actually I I thought about, obviously, you know, wanting to maybe sometime do that. When you, you floated the idea about, would you want to buy the depot? Well, I might. But this is a first step. You know, I mean, I mean, I think the great room has tremendous potential. I mean, right now, wedding receptions, I mean, you know, whatever it may be, but this this is another step in its in its evolution, you know?
Okay, thanks, man.
Everybody's.
Good, thank you.
I just wanted to add a, one other thing there. The improvements that the city's going to make through the white boxing are forty, fifty-year improvements or or longer. The the sewer that's in there has been in there since the, since the day the building was was built. The the electric that is going in there is going into a panel. All the, all the other electricity that'll go throughout the building will be put in by the developer, not by the, not by these funds. It's just brought to the panel. Improvements like that is, are are long-term improvements. It'll probably be there and usable long after, long after Matt's gone. And I don't mean long after he gives up business. I mean, long after he's gone, period. And I'm sure long after most of us are, three of us are going. I I think.
Me first.
Speak for yourself.
Clean living.
If you're going to live more than fifty years, God bless you, but that's what it's going to take.
That's my goal.
And I I think we need to keep that in mind. We're just, we're not doing this for Matt Murray. We're not doing this for a restaurant. We're doing this for the building and whatever potentially might go in there and it'll be, it's long-term investment. It's not a, it's not a fifteen-year investment that the time and it would take the pan off, we're paying twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month.
You know, Mr. Davidson, I appreciate your sentiments. And as I told Mr. Fano and Mr. McGregor, I said, if they can do it for fifty cents, I'm all for it. You know, just don't tell me the project's dead. I'm willing to work with the city because I believe in it. It's not unhinged passion, just blind ridiculousness, just doing something. You know, I've sat in that seat. I know, I know what's going on. And, you know, I'm willing to work for the city, but give it a chance. Give this a chance. You know, I I think in the end that the the vote that you make either consensually tonight or next week, I think you're going to look back at this and you're going to say, you know what, it was a difficult decision, but it's something that I'm glad that I, that we did. You know, and I just, you know, can't encourage you enough. You know, not take a leap of faith in me. Take a leap of faith in the depot. Take a leap of faith in its history. Take a leap of faith in our community's history. And I think that you're going to be proud of what you did.
Excuse me.
Are we good? Or you guys got enough information so that we can? We don't want to keep dragging this in. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Matt. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Nick.
Yeah, I thank you just as well. Number four, Mount Pleasant Street. Mr. McGregor?
Um, as we're beginning the design stages, uh, not beginning, we're in the middle of the design stage of Mount Pleasant Street. The overlay project between Roosevelt and Gere, it was a combined STGB at that time, grant application. I was talking with Jim about the reconstruction of what it's going to be and I don't know that you guys know what its plan was. Currently, it's a four-lane road. In the grant application, it is proposed to go down to a three-lane road with a turn lane road in the middle and then a bike lane. So I just wanted to let you know that that's what the plan was. I assumed you knew that. I didn't know that until I, you know, we started getting to design, so.
How far to how far?
From Roosevelt all the way to Gere.
Now, I don't know if this was ever presented to the council like that.
Two thousand twelve or thirteen.
Roosevelt to Gere?
Yeah.
Great. It's a, it's a combined project.
For for West Burlington there, we we questioned whether they were on board and what was their comments?
They were on board. Dan has been, you know, reminding them that that's what this is. Mr. Gifford has been reminding them that's what this is.
And I haven't reminded you because I didn't know it.
I didn't know it either, so, to be fair. So I, it it is going to be a change in what people's traffic patterns are. You know, you will no longer have the opportunity to drive in two lanes. It'll just be one way essentially, one lane with the center turn lane.
So the whole of Mount Pleasant really then comes down to, from Curran to Roosevelt's the only four-lane section. Well, I guess up by North Hill School.
Correct. It goes back to four lane after Mount Pleasant.
And this is similar, really, as we look at Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, as we're doing the design work on that, that's taken that to a two-lane with a bike lane?
A wider sidewalk, that that could be potential as a bike lane. It 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 would be barricaded sidewalk, but I don't really know when they, when they narrowed, they tapered the lane, the bridge down for traffic load.
Yeah.
But that will be the permanent plan moving forward. It's a, it's a lot cheaper to to just have two lanes of a bridge rather than the four.
And when we, when he's talking about the, this project coming up, causes me consternation. But at the same time, it matches your complete streets philosophy that you did buy on to here a couple of years ago. I mentioned to Jason Hutchison with the chamber and from his perspective, just off the cuff, he wondered about with shears and traffic flow out of there at at shift change. And I think that, I can't remember who mentioned, possibly having to see about making an adjustment to trying to get traffic to go at the the four, there's a four-way stop over to the west of there, but.
Broadway or West Burlington?
Broadway Street.
Their lot doesn't, their lot doesn't function off of that and I don't know if it could, but this is something that we wanted to at least get out here for you to start thinking about.
It's a big change. I mean, it's, it's a long stretch of roadway than.
That is a long stretch of roadway.
That's, I think it's calculates to be out about two miles.
Going from four lanes to two.
It is. You know, there is a lot of safety concerns there, safety that comes with it.
Yeah, but.
Three lanes, right?
Three lanes with the center turn lane, correct. One lane each way.
Right. Well, that's pretty much two. You can't drive down the center the whole way, so. Any questions for?
Nick did last week.
It hasn't been. It hasn't been an issue of where we are with the, from Curran to the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge.
Not that I know of, no.
But we don't have a shears.
And that's a different traffic load.
Oh, yeah, that's different.
Yeah, definitely moves from an arterial street in in the capacity where we are changing it down to more of a residential.
What what about for traveling with emergencies and with the fire, the police department, fire department, what do they got to say about that? I like four lanes. I don't, two-lane stuff makes me nervous.
Well, since we haven't experienced it, I'm just not real familiar with the bike lane and exactly how that's going to work. You know, Mr. Davidson made the comment, but that stretch of road does not include a bike lane.
That's true.
I'm just not real sure how it's going to work. I know it's it's working really well in other communities. And and at the staff meetings, I was talking, I was the one talking about shears, trying to get out, especially that traffic trying to turn left. Now, some of that traffic's been resolved because they built a new parking lot where Baldwin Brothers used to be. And they go, they walk underneath the overpass, so that traffic has a chance to get out of the four-way stop. But but that was a concern and I, and as far as the bike lane, I just, I think it's it's successful in other communities. I think it's just a big adjustment for the people that are traveling on that roadway to be aware that, hey, you know, you really seriously are going to have to share the road because I think people take advantage of that bike lane. I truly do.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Are we good, guys? Or can we get any other information tonight? Jim?
I guess as we talked about, what do you do? If you didn't like this, it's.
I don't like it. What do we do? I don't.
Service probably wouldn't like me here saying this, but eventually the striping will go away. The asphalt should last longer than the striping, so you could probably re-stripe it. But don't let them.
But part of the, what we did talk about was, and that's why you're saying it that way. When you, when you submit a project like that and they score it, they score it for safety?
Correct. They 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 score it for safety and then the the bike lane is also a safety factor, but also a recreational factor. So it scores you towards the hot, the top of the list. And so if you were to do it in a, in a manner differently than your application, the funding might get pulled. And so that's the fear of changing it, you know, changing the way the grant was written. And I don't even know the dollar figure on that grant either, off the top of my head.
I don't have a problem.
But it's a significant amount. It's.
I don't have a problem with what.
The problem is we just haven't been communicating it. And and I don't know how much West Burlington's been communicating it, not enough that it's.
Publicly, I don't know how much.
I've heard.
I don't have a problem with it.
I do, but if everybody else is groovy with it, it doesn't matter.
Well, you have some time to think about. It's not like we're anywhere.
No, construction won't happen on this until late summer.
But if you were to not want this to happen, we'd have to, I can't figure out some way to get out of this project.
Yeah.
Correct.
Very soon.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, I'm just saying, concrete, it's not forever, but it's a process and it's expensive not to, not to make it forever. You know, I mean, once that, once those roads are there, I mean.
And this would, this would be an asphalt overlay. This would be a milling filter.
I appreciate you.
There's not, there's no, in other words, there's no widening or narrowing of the current roadway.
It is not, it is not what I would consider a reconstruction.
What was the, what was the, what was the tag on that? What was the price tag on that?
The overall project, I'm sorry, I don't know that.
I want to say one point seven million, but.
I thought it was two point one.
Let me see.
That's for asphalt? That's for all asphalt?
It's also fifty foot wide, two miles wide.
They just don't give anything away anymore.
They don't. There, there is a lot of other asphalt projects going, going, so, excuse me, going on in the community this year, so hopefully we get a little bit better bid price. As I mentioned before, with the potential for temporary traffic lights at Division and West Burlington Avenue because of the, you know, the dedicated detour for West Burlington, the West Burlington West Avenue's roundabout, Division Street is the dedicated detour for that road. So you'll see that coming first and then Agency Street should come online shortly after that. Along with that, West Burlington is also milling and overlaying from Agency Street from West Burlington all the way up to Gere. And then they are also doing Gere from Mount Pleasant Street to just the thirty-four overpass. And they're also doing Broadway. So the west part of town will be full of construction. Hopefully, we can stagger this out far enough that they, they don't all overlap. All the asphalt projects are are kind of a later August, September type timeframe, but you know, Agency will be a mess this year and.
No doubt.
And and along with the detour. So Division is, we're going to see a lot of traffic load on that. So you'll probably see a proposal coming here shortly for the temporary traffic signal to go up at West Burlington and Division, so.
Well, we believe in you, Nick. You're going to be able to figure all this out, so we appreciate you. Appointments, does anybody have any, any problems with appointments? Are, were there, do you know were there any others that applied for the Strike Preservation Commission?
I don't have any idea if there were or not.
I I don't have a problem with the people that are that have applied.
Usually that they, she would have, they they would show the others too.
There, there's an extra T after. There, there's an extra T after K Y S's name here in this list, so. Probably should fix that.
Okay.
Are we good then? Are we good?
Yep.
Okay, that's my stomach. Mr. Tisner, any closer remarks? Council lady?
No, thank you.
Councilman?
Nope.
Mayor Protown?
No.
Councilman?
I'm through.
Uh, city manager?
Um, I'm out of town the next two days, going to go with the Chamber to, uh, on their trip to Des Moines. Which means I'm not here to do the radio on Wednesday morning. I can do it next week if, if you're willing to switch around.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. And that's really all I had, so.
That's all you got? Okay. Again, thank you for, uh, thank you for watching tonight. Come to beautiful downtown Burlington. Rob Sussman even got married here. Good night. When they hear that, Rob.